All right, we're going to go ahead and call this June twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two, City of Gallatin Council Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Alexander is absent right now. Councilman Fann.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
President.
Councilwoman Love is absent, and Councilman Overton.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have the approval of the minutes for the May tenth, two thousand twenty-two Council Committee meeting.
Most approved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by George. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
This motion carries. All right, this time, we'll have public recognition, so if anybody wants to come up or speak before the meeting. Please give your name and address to the record.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Hayes. My name is Michelle Juvance, and I live at thirteen thirty-five Long Hollow Pike. My address is on the agenda, not specifically written on the agenda, but it's on the agenda for item number seven tonight. And I'm actually kind of nervous right now. I'm not usually nervous. So I'd like to actually pray. So if everyone would just please join me in prayer. Lord Jesus, thank you for this city. Thank you for everyone in this room. Thank you for the breath that you give us each day. And we invite you, we invite your Holy Spirit into this room at this time. And we pray that the words that are spoken would be true, truthful, and that your will would be done. We ask all these things in your name, amen. Last week, Vice Mayor Fennell said, this is an exact quote, "Five to seven weeks ago, if you remember, we had a citizen that come up here and spoke upset about being annexed into the city and said they were not receiving all plan of services." This is not true. I went back and looked at the times that I spoke within the last two months. I went back to April, and I believe I know what you're talking about, which speech that I made that you're talking about. It's on April five, April five. And I did speak about annexation issues, and I was not upset, and I'm not unhappy. I love Gallatin, and I don't like it when you twist my words, and I don't like it when you say that I'm saying something that I'm not saying, because I'm very clear when I speak, and I put it on the record, and it's all there, and you can go back and watch it, because it's recorded and it's all there. And that day, I did ask you to follow the law, and I did speak about the plans of services that were not complete, and I did say that you should not be annexing more land until the plans of services are complete. And I did speak about police services, that certain annexations were promised, certain police services, and we don't have adequate police services. So I don't know why you're lying about this, because that was not my intent and the words that I said. I simply made a statement that the city was in default, and I even, over the last three years, have pointed out solutions for how the city can actually legally amend a plan of service to remove, for example, a sewer service, and then complete it. It would be complete, and then it wouldn't be in default anymore. I've given you solutions, legal solutions. So since you all have decided that you are going to act like you're the boss of me and my husband, and talk about removing our city from, removing our property from the city, I have some questions for you. Whose idea was it to de-annex me and Pascal? Councilman Hayes, last week, you said it wasn't your idea. Whose idea was it? Councilman Overton, was it your idea? And why now? I want to know if it's now, like, why all of a sudden do you have this idea to de-annex us? Because for three years, I've been talking about the annexations ever since the Meadows, when I learned about this law, that you can't annex if you're in default on a plan of services. So I've been talking about it for three years. So why now? All of a sudden, last week, did you all of a sudden think that you should de-annex us from the city? And just us, just my address? Just me and Pascal? So do you think that you're going to silence us by kicking us out of the city? Just because you don't like what we say, that doesn't mean that we're unhappy, it means that you're unhappy.
I think your five minutes is up, so.
So I have one more question. This is a big deal. If you're going to kick me out of the city, it's a big deal. I just have one more question. So you all said, like, well, let's find out if they want to be de-annexed. We'll put it on the agenda this week and find out. But why didn't you call us and ask us this week, or email us? Like, do you really want to know? Like, why didn't you contact us and ask us this? You didn't. Thanks for the time.
Thank you.
I was not going to speak now, because I'm waiting for my agenda number seven, because like Michelle said, Vice Mayor say he will ask us at that time, so I will answer during my time. But Michelle mentioned the word of Councilman, of Vice Mayor, sorry, apologize, Fennell. And I think people really need to understand what's going on here. So I actually have, like, it's online, but people don't, don't follow a lot online. I actually have the recording of what she said during that meeting, so. Jeff, maybe? It's on a USB, so we can really, people need to realize that what she said was not what Vice Mayor Fennell said at the last meeting. So I have it on my iPad, too, so probably people are going to be able to hear it.
Good evening, Council. I'm Michelle Juvance, thirteen thirty-five Long Hollow Pike. I'm going to make a few comments about the Plan of Service Progress Status Report that's required to be published yearly. The City of Gallatin is in default on the two thousand and eight Plan of Service for the annexation that includes my property on Long Hollow Pike. The planned sewer was to be completed within five years. It was not. It has not yet been completed. It's been fourteen years. There is no plan to complete it, as far as I can tell, because it's not listed on the long-range sewer plan that was recently presented to you all by our Director of Public Utilities several weeks ago. And I'm here to remind you that the city is required by state law to publish a report on the progress made toward fulfilling the Plan of Service annually until it is fully implemented.
Oops, sorry.
You know, a double-wide trailer.
Hey, I went too far. Sorry about that.
This public hearing of the City of Gallatin Plan of Service Progress Status Report, Vice Mayor Fennell. That is how short-staffed we are in our police department. Remember in November of last year, you did a temporary rate of pay adjustment because the city is having difficulty fulfilling and retaining certain critical positions. Many of our critical infrastructure departments are short-staffed and stressed. It is not fair to them to continue annexing without giving them a chance to catch up on services. I would like to see you do a moratorium on annexations until we are caught up with our current annexation plan of services. For example, I'm going to give an example of our police department. I believe that currently, we have a hundred employees with our police department. With the temporary raise that you all did last year, there was a hundred and seven police positions, and we were short-staffed by sixteen at that time. I think that we have filled some, but I believe that we have a hundred at this time. I'm not sure Chief Bandi could confirm that. But in two thousand and seven, our police department had ninety-two employees, and that included sixty-one sworn officers. And the two thousand and eight Plan of Service required adding five officers plus two support staff, so that equaled ninety-nine employees. So if we have a hundred now, that was fourteen years ago, we're kind of at the same spot. In two thousand and eight, Gallatin's population was twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine. I remember a few weeks ago, Mr. McCord, right here at this podium, saying that our estimated population is now a little over forty-nine thousand. MTAAS recommends an officer-to-population ratio of two-point-five-five per one thousand citizens. At our current population, we should have a hundred and twenty-five officers. Even if we use the two thousand and twenty census data of forty-four thousand-plus population, we should have a hundred and thirteen officers, and that doesn't include.
I can't stop here, but that doesn't sound to me somebody who's upset and never heard anything about what you said on a record, sir. So that would be nice if you actually stopped twisting our words.
Can I say something, Craig?
Yes, go ahead.
I want to advise that, as I said last week, that Ms. Hamacalli said that we need to keep the public comment, public comment.
Okay.
At the end, if this council wishes to respond to anything, once public comment is closed, you may do so.
I'm John Millard. I live at one oh four Pine Drive, outside the city limits. How about we just cut to the chase? Everyone here really needs to apologize. The city has now, and the city's going to have, lots and lots and lots of problems. All right? The residents don't need this kind of fighting and this kind of infighting. Apologize, get it over with, and let's get on doing what you're elected to do. All right? And, and deal with the issues that, that the city and the county has to face. I wrote, what I was going to say was, pull up your big-boy pants and get to work on what you're supposed to be doing. And that's, that's the bottom line.
Hi, I'm William Flowers. I live at three fifty East Main. I'm sure you're all aware, but I just wanted to take a moment, possibly just a moment of silence, to recognize Homer Bradley passing away today. He's an excellent, great example of a citizen of Gallatin that I think we should all follow.
My name is Sandra Cohen. I live in Gallatin, three oh four University Drive. In my life, I've been privileged to reside in two countries, four states, and eight cities. But until last week, I had never experienced what I watched taking place at your last meeting. I was gobsmacked by this body, that this body was debating expelling from the city a citizen who has the backbone to speak against many things you, our representatives, choose to do. It was bad enough that one of you had the idea to de-annex someone. I don't even know what to say for the five others who voted to bring it forward to this work session for further discussion. Don't kid yourself. Pascal is not the only one who disagrees with things that you do. He has likened what you said.
All right, all right. Y'all are going to have to quit now, because we need to keep it under control, please, if y'all don't mind.
He has, he has likened what you said and did to a trip back to communism. My mind, on the other hand, shot back to the late thirties and forties in Germany, where they did just, they just did away with those that who were different from them. I feel certain that others who watched that meeting have their own personal issues that arose from that scene. The last time I checked, Gallatin was still a part of the United States of America, where one of our most basic rights is freedom of speech. So I assume that I'm not, that I am far from alone in the shock that I felt watching that meeting. I don't like a lot of things that are finalized in city council or county commission meetings, but this was the first time I have felt actual disgust at the actions of either group. And I realized that in saying these things, I could be next on the chopping block for simply stating my opinion. But I'm saying it anyway, because it has to be said. And those of you who are elected officials who feel injured or angry when the people don't agree with you, it's actually very, very simple. If you can't take the heat, get out of the kitchen.
Hey, guys, I appreciate, but I gave my word to the chief that we will behave as we're supposed to behave, so let's, please, I appreciate.
Be respective, yes, please.
That's a short person here, hold on. Okay, all right, good. All right, Ruth Fennell, one zero four nine Blue Jay Way in Gallatin. In two thousand and seventeen, Gallatin was selected as the nicest place in America. You may remember. As a matter of fact, I actually have one of our hanging posters that were from the light poles framed in my house, because I'm very proud of that. But I'm asking you why? Because there was a pervasive love of this community and the things that make Gallatin unique, the sense of being a small town in a big city, of knowing your neighbors, pieces of Americana, that are important, like parades and Friday night high school football and crosstown rivalries. All of those things made Gallatin unique. But Gallatin was also selected because there's different perspectives where people could come together, and there've been multiple examples of that, where respect and trust were given by people to people who didn't know each other very well. Before Gallatin received that award, we'd had a police shooting where a citizen lost her life, but rather than riot, our citizens came together with community leaders to talk, listen to each other, and build bonds. Since that time, though, I've watched our government meetings not exemplify that same kind of camaraderie, partnership, and relationship building. I've seen where respect and trust are not given by people or to people. I know that everybody has their story, their perspectives, their motivations, but I'm thinking about what the outside world sees of Gallatin. Do they see laws being requested to stifle individual citizens? Do they see actions being taken to exclude people? I'm going to ask you to ask yourself, are what we doing isn't making an image of Gallatin that we're proud of, that citizens of Sumner County would be proud of? I understand that things have been said, hurt feelings, John is exactly right. Everybody needs to apologize, get together in a room, and talk about it. Everybody needs to think in terms of having a conversation with somebody that you might perceive as an opponent. We need to incorporate different perspectives into the conversation, and then risk rejection from elected officials.
Not the timer.
Okay, I was going to say, wait a minute. From the elected official side, I see people who've stepped up, volunteered your time, given a lot of time, some in case decades. But you've required knowledge of the ins and outs of government, what it requires, and I appreciate that sacrifice. I also know that elected officials have made decisions and cast votes that our community has to live with. Whether the votes and decisions were good, time's going to tell, but they were made with good intentions, and I believe that. From the citizen's side, I see people who love their community, who want to preserve the things that made Gallatin special enough to be the nicest place in America. People are seeing growth that seems out of control, they feel like it's going to destroy the wonderful things about this community, decimate our finances, they want to be included. Speaking from personal experience, citizen involvement in this county has not always been welcomed or appreciated. I've been the victim of that. That's not right. That's not how we were designed. We are not enemies of each other, and I know that many of you personally, all of you are nice people. While we have a problem, though, it's a lack of communication and empathy for the perspectives of others, while there's ownership on all sides. Again, John was right, everybody needs to apologize and sit down at a table. I believe the greater responsibility to constructively address this comes from the elected official's side for several reasons. Number one, you volunteered for the positions that you require to represent all citizens. If you don't talk to them, you can't consider what they're saying. And then number two, people in positions of power can retaliate or abuse that power. For example, we have the current Department of Justice going after parents who are trying to give direction to their school boards. Our Tennessee Constitution requires that citizens instruct their representatives. That's what we're trying to do. I'm here to ask this body to take a deep breath, step back, before you make any decisions that are going to harm this community, the image of this community, and the people that you represent. In Reader's Digest article on Gallatin, and I warned him about this, Chief Bandi said, he's quoted as saying, "When you make yourself friendly, you have a better chance of making a friend. You have to go across the aisle and say, 'I want you to be a part of us, and I want to be a part of what you're doing.'" Again, according to the Reader's Digest article about Gallatin, Pastor Jackson said, "The beauty of Gallatin is that there is an attempt to do what others feel is impossible." My challenge to you as community leaders, build a bridge, do the right things for the right reasons, talk to each other, and once again, let's do the impossible. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Janung. I live at eleven hundred Lock Four Road in Gallatin. I'm here because I am very disappointed at what I heard last week. I wasn't here, but I saw it on video. I, in my life, have not experienced that, except when I was in Haiti doing missionary work, when the people who didn't like what your viewpoint was, they would have you eliminated. And that was what, that was their little trend in Haiti. But I'm back in the United States, and everyone has a right to free speech, in my opinion. If we need to give out books on that, there are small little books that tell you what your rights are. I'm very embarrassed. I've lived here for thirty-two years, and I cannot believe that you would be upset that people come to you and give their, give you their thoughts and their concerns, and your thought is to pull them out of the city, because you, you don't like what they're saying, or you're unhappy, or your feelings are hurt. I understand what everyone else is saying, you need to take a deep breath, you need to come together, and we do. We have a lot of division in our country. We don't need it in Gallatin. When I was a professor teaching school, I had students that didn't like the grade. They didn't like what they heard, they didn't understand the rationale, but you had to explain it to them, or you had to just say, well, let's talk about it. This is not what happened here. I've seen a lot of bitterness in the last six months. I'm serious. This is terrible. And I have lived here a long time, and it just makes me want to cry. I love my country, my community, and I've lived it for all the years that I've lived here. I've respected every single person in this community and the people that sit up here. But I am so embarrassed and so upset, and I want you to understand that we love our community, and this should never have happened. These people don't deserve it, they shouldn't have had to come before you and fight and talk about what they did, or what they said, or what you understood, or what they didn't What does that got to do with it? You know, if, if you don't like them being in the city, you should never have annexed them in the first place. So I'm done talking, I'm just very upset about it, and I believe we have a First Amendment right to speak what we need to say, as long as we don't yell "fire" in a theater.
My name is Josh Graham. I live at three oh six Wildcat Run. I thank you for the opportunity to speak regarding the proposed de-annexation of thirteen thirty-five Long Hollow Pike. There's an old proverb which states, "The nail that stands up gets hammered down," and I think that's exactly what is happening with this proposal. As someone who has potentially gerrymandered in October of last year, I can say for certainty, if it looks bad and smells bad, it is bad. I can't believe we're even having this discussion of whether or not to de-annex a citizen's private residence against their own will. Based on prior comments of the last meeting, it seems as though there's some animosity toward the Jovances for constantly speaking out against the actions of this city council. I personally appreciate their willingness to be a voice for the citizens of Gallatin. Not only is it our right to speak out against our government, it's our responsibility, and they've taken that responsibility seriously. So seriously that Pascal has decided for a second time to throw himself on the sword of ridicule and run for a seat to be on the city council. Any removal of his property from the city limits will be seen as a clear act of gerrymandering to remove him from contention. So please do the right thing and stop these shenanigans and this nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joe DeBoer, and I live at one double oh seven Hart Street here in Gallatin. The point that I want to make tonight is that we are progressing as a city. We have a little problem with, with our wonderful economy that our president has put us into, and that's created a big, big problem. Our money doesn't go as far as it used to, we're not going to be able to get the services that we need to have, and I'm going to have to stand up for the council here tonight as a group. They did not know that this was going to come, they did not know that we're going to be caught red-handed, they're doing the best thing they can with what they've got, and with regard to annexation of extra properties, we don't even know if that's going to be built yet. I'm talking about the Meadows. If they don't- If they don't get a, get a, a bridge across the railroad track, guess what? They're not gonna go in business. Somebody's gonna be out there paying a pile of money for nothing. So now, when we start digging around in our community and start fussing, you best have some basis of how the city works. Now, with regard to our friends out here, I don't think that's too kosher. And we're gonna go through this problem, just like everyone else we have. But in the meantime, guess what? If, if we don't have to send sewage out from, from some person's house, they don't have to pay the dang bill, okay? You're only getting paid for half of it because half of it is for the water. So now, with that being said, that's the end of that story. They have plenty of property out there to park it. That's fine. And with regard to the trash, we had a problem with the trash out there, and they finally went out and got somebody to haul it. But guess what? It was not work through our community and through, through Mr. Robertson out there at the office, and I'm sure he would accommodate them, no problem. Agree, I agree with one thing that some of the folks have said, and that is communication. Absolute communication. And sometimes when you cannot understand someone, it's not any problem from, from, from me to you, you have a problem. But I want to stand here tonight and support our council. Because we're gonna have a bridge fixed out on, on Long Hollow Pike. We're gonna have some, if somebody wants to build out there, guess what? They're gonna be the one that widen that road out there. The rest of us don't have to pay for that, okay? If they want to put it out there, fine, they're gonna build the road, and they're gonna widen it and help everybody on the far side next to the lake, and they won't have to worry about their million-dollar houses, okay? Because the other people on the other side, they're gonna have to build that road. And it's a wonderful opportunity for us to do that. We've got that on the budget. I just talked to Jimmy about that a minute ago, okay? So we're on the track to get stuff done around here. It just takes a little time. And I'll tell you another little thing, sweetheart. You only have, you only have one crew working for our people in street. We should have three more. How much more is that gonna cost you? You wanna take, you wanna pay the bill on the taxes? Come on down, we'll do it. But we're not gonna be able to do that because, number one, we can't get the people to do the work. So with that, I, I yield. Have a great day. Thank you, folks. Even you, Hayes.
Thanks. Anybody else?
My name's Bob Brown. I live at 587 Forest Street Road, Hendersonville. Coming to speak on my friend's behalf here. I spent 30 years in the military. They had some countries that, they didn't have the freedoms that we have here. They'd come in and shoot you. They'd come in and bomb you. That's the way they excluded you. Pascal's been, he's a veteran, too. It's a shame that you want to exclude him from your city. That's not what you do with dissent. Try and build a bridge, try and iron out the solutions. I don't understand why something that childish was done at this last meeting, which I'll need to dig deep. Thank you.
...to, to a better community. And, you know, I talk about being a God-centered community and extending grace, and I find those two things to be very, very important. And I was caught off guard. I told somebody in email today, it was probably not my finest moment. I was caught off guard. I was probably in a bit of shock, but certainly did not think it was the right thing to do. So with that, I will conclude the mayor's comments, and thank you, Ms. Councilman Hayes.
Thank you. All right, this time. Say anything?
Thank you, Craig. You know, ladies-
Do we need to make a motion, I guess, to?
We're gonna discuss it at number seven.
One thing you might do out of consideration for the people here is to move that item up.
That's what I was gonna say. Let's, let's, if nobody has a problem, let's move item number seven up to the top. Is anybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Any, any opposition to that? Okay. All right, we'll move item number seven, which is the de-annexation discussion. All right, we'll move it on.
I do agree with what Mr. Miller had to say, pretty much. But one thing I'd like to say is, I was just trying to do this to help. You know, go ahead and laugh. I mean, he mentioned one time that she got up there and spoke, and I'm not gonna pull public records request over the years. But I think this council with the vote that they made the other evening, I think they understand where I'm coming from. If, if I'm making it up, I'd say everybody on this council knows that they've complained about de-annexation, or de-annexation issue and the plan of services for years, and I certainly was just trying to help. I'm not the first person that brought this out. I'm not the first person that brought this out. It come up three or four weeks ago. It was on the internet, it was on the Facebook.
Everybody, please, please, y'all.
Erased it.
I'm gonna suggest that I interfere for your benefit and the benefit of this council and the city. I think that they have certainly indicated that being de-annexed is not something they are interested in. And so I think the proper movement of this body is to put it to bed-
I'll be glad to put it-
-and take it off the table. Or not, that's probably not the good term, I'm sorry.
I'll be glad to put it to bed. I just didn't really swallow the part of being a liar. I mean, I had a lot of stuff I wanted to say tonight, and I chose not to, and especially after I heard Mr. Miller. I think it's the right thing to do. But the audience out here, there's a lot, not a lot. There's some things that I would like, I would love to say. You know, when it comes on the internet, and you're corrupt, and you're this, and you're that, that's harmful. I mean, we've all heard it. It's not just singled out to me, it's other people. And, you know, I think the best thing to do is, I just wanted, and, and I do apologize to Mimi. I should have got Mimi off to the side or Pascal and said, "Hey, you know, I think this is a good idea. If you guys, you can choose, if you want to stay on, in this, uh, be de-annexed, here's a, here's an option right here that come out." I mean, I probably should have done that rather than putting it on the, on the floor like that. You know, I did have a conversation with Mimi out into the parking lot. It was a civil conversation. If I had that to take back, that would be the part that, that I would take back rather than putting it out there in the media. One thing I would like to say, the vote the other night, it was, I think, five to one. And I was gung ho. I was ready to make that move. And, and I know it could have, it could have went a step further, but I did listen to the comments from a couple of people up here, and I thought, well, the best thing to do is put it back in the work session and let the council talk about it and hear from the citizens. I think there's probably been stuff on both sides said. And just my theory is, I would love to say a lot of stuff about that, but this time I'm not. I see that they're passionate about staying in the city. Maybe they're happy now, maybe they've changed their mind. I'm just, I, I would just say, I don't think there's any reason in discussing the de-annexation any further. I'd like to do what the mayor said, just put it to bed.
I would second that.
All right.
Emotions, I'd like to be acknowledged.
Do what?
I'd just have one comment.
Yeah, let Councilman Fan, he just said he wanted to say something first, if you don't mind.
I'd like to say that I think Mr. Fennell is doing the right thing. He's doing the best thing for the city. He said there's some things he'd like to say. He's not gonna say it. I think he's taking the high road, and he's willing to put it to bed, and I think the citizens and the council should too.
Okay, mayor, can we please, can y'all please hold your comments and everything, and laughing and all that, please, if you don't mind?
I think we'll all agree that this isn't really funny, and, and, you know, and I ask that we all work to be respectful of each other. But one thing that I did want to share with this body, since Ms. Love is not with us this evening, is she did call me after the meeting, after she saw, I think she saw something on social media or something, and she said that she did not realize that Mr. Jevance had pulled papers to run for election. So she said, "I had no idea." And then certainly, we know the situation that Ms. Love has been in for the last several weeks with her, for her father, and I certainly- I felt like, I felt like I would, I should share that on her behalf since she's not here, so.
And, and I'd like to say, too, that I, I think it's the right thing to do, you know, and, and just, I think Mr. Miller coming up here and saying what he said, I think that was pretty, that was, that was nice of him to do that. I don't, I don't think it's right to just go out there and just arbitrarily take somebody out of the city limits, you know, do that. So I think, I think that, you know, we're, we're all, I think everybody had time after last week to step back and look at it and say, you know, we made a mistake. You know, we're not perfect. Everybody up here is not perfect. I know I was the one that voted no for it. I'm not perfect, but I still think everybody's not perfect up here. Everybody out there is not perfect. So I think that everybody did have time to look at it and probably, you know, I think sometimes your emotions get carried away, and I think that's what happens. So I think that we are making the right decision now. I think Mr. Fennell is making the right decision now, saying, "Hey, look, we need to put this to bed." So does anybody else have anything to say?
I do, Craig.
Yes.
I appreciate you, Mr. Fennell, I really do. And I appreciate the citizens coming up tonight. I just wish that we could get this kind of passionate for our city and not just because of the negative stuff they're here tonight for. I wish we could get more citizens to, you know, we have so many nonprofits here in Gallatin. I wish they would donate their time and, and help make our city a better place instead of us arguing and fussing all the time. You know, we get on social media, and, and I think every councilperson up here loves this city more than you can ever imagine. If we didn't, we wouldn't serve it. We wouldn't be away from our families. We wouldn't be away from our families for, for hours at a time. None of us. But when you get on social media and things, and you get folks that get on there that absolutely try to destroy us, our families, our image, try to get conspiracies of what we're gonna do with no proof whatsoever of it, they just get conspiracies and throw it out on social media. It's not fun. It's not fun for our kids to see. It's not fun for our families to see. And I appreciate you being passionate about our city. We're all passionate about our city. We love our city, just like you love our city. And I appreciate you coming tonight. Thank you, Mr. Fennell, for doing what you've done. Hopefully, this meeting, you'll understand, we're not the bad guys. We don't always make the decisions that you're gonna be happy about. We never will. But that's what this city's all about. That's why we have such a great city. We don't always agree with each other on the council. There's a lot of times that we don't vote like each other on the council. We didn't vote the other night alike. Ms. Hayes voted against it the other night. But we all love our city. We all have families. We all care about it. Thank you.
Anybody else up here have anything to say?
Let me say one thing, Craig.
All right, one more thing.
Yeah, I, I just want to say to all the council members and all the constituents out there, and it applies to everybody. I've been on the city council for 20-something years. I've been criticized for some things. I've been praised for some things, but that's part of the job. But at the end of the day, if, when you give the best of your service, and people still don't understand, don't be dismayed, whatever betrays you, because God will take care if you do it from your heart and not in spite of somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything up here? Anybody? Mr. Jevance wants to speak. Can we?
He did have a motion in a second to-
I know, we got, Mr. Jevance wants to speak. Do y'all, do y'all want to let him speak?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion second? Second? No, we need to let him speak first, I want. More.
Thank you, Craig. I appreciate the motion. You're right. You were, we had a phone call this week together, actually two phone calls, or 20-something minutes where we had a nice, nice and pleasant conversation. But the issue here, it's not new. This issue started two and a half years ago. And Councilman Overton, I agree with you. I agree with your speech that when people go on the internet and throw stuff out with no reason, that's not good. And that's what you guys have done to me for nine months at the last election. All right? You had frighten us. That started by a phone call from one of you to my wife, frighten us. And Suzanne probably remember because we had a conversation about it, okay? After, when that didn't work, you used a lieutenant general coming after me because I said I was a veteran. And just for a little piece of history, veteran is a French word. And France had an army before the US. So veteran come from France. That's not just a US word. And everybody I talked to, and you know where I work, and our workforce is probably more than 50% of retired Air Force, Navy, Marines. And they have no issue with me being a veteran. Marines, and they have no issue with me being a veteran, or calling me a veteran. One of the emails I received during that time, and again, I come back to Councilman Overton comments, was saying, "I'm not sure, but I have a couple of US Army lawyers looking at the Stolen Veteran Act, to see if this fits under that act. This is very serious to me as a US military veteran. When I read your flyer, I like ninety percent of those who receive it will think you are implying that you are a US Army service veteran. The simple solution is to correct your flyer, your call." I call that coercion, at least tentative, or pathetic attempt, you know, because that didn't work. What this lieutenant general didn't know is that, you know, if I'm, I was a sergeant in the Army, and proud of it, I receive an email from a lieutenant general from the US Army telling me he's going to unleash the, the Jag on me, yeah, I'm going to get scared, but unfortunately for that person, thanks to the city, and thanks to probably Jeff, who's always on time, we had a recording of a soundbite of three of you guys talking at a city address about this gentleman. So, I have the recording here, I can let you listen to it if you want to, it was kind of interesting. You know, it's pretty, and that got picked up from the city, so, let's see. It's kind of hard to... So, you know, the recording there, and...
What was, what was that, I mean, I didn't...
The transcript, you want the transcript?
I mean, now, what was it about, though, is what I'm saying?
That was about the vote was coming at the city council, and you guys, so basically, this, this lieutenant general...
Can I, can I stop you just for a minute?
Yeah.
I mean...
I'm going to come back to the issue.
I mean, we're sitting here, ready to put this to bed, and say, I think basically, everybody voted for it, and including myself, you know, we're sorry, is what we're saying. But it seems like you're wanting to bring up bad stuff again, instead of trying to make it...
People need to understand what's really coming on, and, and you showed again who you really are last week.
I, I understand that.
Who, who in his right mind would have think about stuff like that? You did open a Pandora box, for sure.
I totally understand that, and, and I get where you're coming from, but I'm saying that, that, you know, it's like I said a minute ago, I think people sometimes let their emotions get the best of them, like, I mean, I've seen stuff, or Mimi's put on there, that the...
Her name is Michelle, please. We're not family.
But anyway, the, the, you know, the council's crooked, all that stuff, everything like that, and you and I've had a conversation about that probably two, three years ago, I remember, about, about way back when. Football games, as a matter of fact.
Yeah.
Remember interrupting my Georgia, Georgia U T football game?
What you did last week made my point.
But I'm saying that, that...
How, how do you call, how do you call that?
As Mayor, I know I'm not running this building, but, this meeting, but this is not productive, the back and forth is not productive. And I really ask that we all be respectful of one another, and if you feel like you want to continue conversations, I think there's a time and place to do that.
Yeah, I agree.
But this gotcha, 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 gotcha is just insulting, and, and I agree with what someone said earlier, embarrassing. And so I'm saying we need to stop this.
Yeah.
You agree, Mayor, we need to stop this.
I'm fine with stopping it, but I'd say all of us could go on too.
But I mean, just, let's just, just, like I said, put...
You tried something, that was the late, the late test attempt, you tried something, you got caught, and that's what happened. I appreciate Craig's apology, because I think that's sincere, I think Ms. Love was sincere. Mayor, I, I looked at the video so many times this week, I knew you'd never seen that coming, so, I know you're sincere, Susan too. But I, I will stop there, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, now, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second? Oh, we do have a motion, a second, so, all right, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Put it to bed, that's done, number seven is done. All right, moving on, item number one, dangerous building, ten twenty-five West Street.
Good afternoon, Council, Charles Dufflinger with the Building Codes. Ten twenty-five West Street was originally brought before the council, and, or, sorry.
We might wish to pause until the exodus happens, it's a little noisy. Sorry.
Good afternoon, Council, Charles Dufflinger with the Building Codes Department. Ten twenty-five West Street was originally identified back in two thousand seventeen by Officer Jackson. In February of twenty eighteen, property was inspected and posted by a building inspector as a dangerous building. March fifth of two thousand eighteen, a certified letter was mailed, certified mail letter was sent out with no return contact returned on it. On March of two thousand twenty, no change or contact, sent another certified letter out, which was returned, signed by an Amanda Burns on March fourth of two thousand twenty. And, but due to COVID, show cause hearings were delayed and put on hold at the time. As of a reinspection on July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, and August twentieth, two thousand twenty-one, there was no change to the property in there. A show cause hearing was set forth on October nineteenth in two thousand twenty-one, resulting in the council granting the owner thirty days to obtain permits for repairs. On November sixteenth, an owner representative came into the office and spoke with the building official about obtaining a remodel permit. They said they should be turning in paperwork this week for a permit. As of December second, two thousand twenty-one, no permits had been applied for, per the city attorney, the notices were mailed out, were not mailed out in time for timeframe requirements, therefore, the follow-up hearing was set up for January fourth of two thousand twenty. On December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one, the owner applied and obtained for a remodel permit. As you can tell from the photos that are before you, no changes have been made as of yesterday. The permit also expires tomorrow, and we wish to move, move this to show cause hearing for the next...
There a motion?
Motion, show cause.
Overton, second by Alexander, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have to send a date on, Susan, you need a date?
We need a date, and I would recommend July the, I believe it was the nineteenth, July nineteenth.
I'll move July nineteenth, show cause here.
I will state, since the permit doesn't expire until tomorrow, I won't mail them out until the thirtieth of June.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilman Alexander, second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, motion carries. All right, number two. Twenty-one forty-four Nashville Pike.
Charles Dufflinger with the Building Codes, and before you, you have a package for, to show cause for twenty-one forty-four Nashville Pike. Back in August of two thousand twenty-one, the building there suffered severe fire damage, and it was determined to be a total financial loss. As of January twenty-first, after that incident, the building department reached out to the owner to request a status update from the owner. On January twenty-fourth, the owner responded back with the intent to demolish the building during the spring. As of June eighth, I went out to do a reinspection of the property, and nothing had been accomplished, nothing of the building had been secured, or anything done to prevent any damage from the elements. On June eighth, also, it was posted as a dangerous building, and a certified letter was sent out, and we have not received confirmation from that, that the owner received the letter back from the US Postal Service yet. But as of yesterday, the owner reached out to the building official, and started to secure the building, so that nobody can gain entry into it. While that is a viable step to prevent people from getting inside and getting injured, there is still some issues outside the building, as you can see from the pictures that are up there, freestanding chimneys are a potential collapse issue, the roof is a potential collapse issue, degradation of the mortar in between the wooden members, as well as the star plexers, which are used to prevent lateral bone of the building, have been compromised. So basically, a good strong wind could possibly cause that entire building to come down.
Motion to move at July nineteenth with show cause hearing.
Motion by Mr. Overton, is there a second?
Second.
I do want to say that...
Second by George.
I do want to say that, looking at those pictures makes me want to cry. I am hopeful that, you know, the action will get the property owner to make some plans that will actually help at least pay homage to this important part of our history. I think this is a very sad situation we're in, relevant to this property.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right, item number three, Mr. Tuttle, ordinance number zero-two-two-zero-seven-dash-three-seven.
This is an ordinance to appropriate both general fund money, but also revenue, there's actually more revenue with this ordinance than general fund money. But this is a, a project that has been on the books for quite some time, it's a project that T-Dot is responsible for, and has been developing for the city, but it's a railroad crossing down on South Water, and they're, they're making just some minor improvements with the crossing, the, the arms, the lights, a little bit of widening, and it's going from a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to a two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollar total project. But the city's contribution to the project is actually going down, where it was about seventeen-five, seventeen thousand five hundred, and our share is actually going down to thirteen thousand four hundred and forty, as we've kind of worked with T-Dot to add some funds to this project. So, good news, the project's still moving ahead, and it's going to be cheaper to the city than it was to begin with.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Overton, second by Mr. Fan, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, motion carries. All right, item number four, resolution R-two-two-zero-seven-dash-five-five.
Jeff, before we go any further, I got two or three people texting me, saying they can't hear us on Facebook, so... Okay, all right.
This is an arts building, the community grant, we've applied for these before, and been successful. But our idea on this one is to install pedestals where displays of art can be changed out, so it could be, you know, renowned artists, one, you know, one exhibit, these would be along the greenway, and then another exhibit could be, you know, school art contest winners, it could be poetry, it could be, but we would have pedestals along the greenway, where we would have changeable art exhibitions. And so the cost to put in those is what we're asking for in the grant. What we're bringing to you is a commitment by the city, no greater than seven thousand. There is a possibility, I think, Ms. Baker with Galton Chamber's been working on some ideas, there is a possibility we could apply for more than one, in which case, we still would not exceed that dollar amount, I wanted to make you aware.
Motion to Senate, Council.
I have a motion by, Mr. Overton, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Councilwoman George. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, motion carries. All right, item number five, resolution number R-two-two-zero-seven-dash-five-four.
Good evening, it was brought to my attention that the number of hours in the calculation for the positions of assistant fire marshal, the fire training officer, the EMS chief was addressed in a meeting with the fire chief and the consultant. And some of the positions in the fire department are, of course, on forty hours and fifty-six hours, and the calculation was not changed for these positions. So I'm seeking approval to reclassify these positions to the grade of GX in the forty-hour fire schedule.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman George, second by Mr. Overton, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number six, resolution number R-two-two-zero-seven-dash-five-six.
With tired eye, with, I'm sorry, with tired eyes, we clarified positions with new titles in the salary schedule that was passed at the last council meeting, and we defined the crew leader position, there were two positions. We passed the salary schedule with the golf course crew leader, listing both locations for the crew leader position, but there, but not the second one, and the second title is Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation Crew Leader at the grade level of GL, so I'm needing that. What we did was, we put the two locations through, we called it a golf course crew leader, and now I need the Parks and Rec Crew Leader, it was missed.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander, any discussion?
That could have been my error, because I was trying to delineate between inmate crew leaders and other crew leaders, so...
I think we were all tired, and we've got the locations through, but we needed two titles and not just one.
All those in favor? Five.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, motion carries. All right.
Thank you very much, Council.
Concludes our regular agenda, any other business from up here, City Council, anybody?
Yes.
Anybody?
I would just like to say that this has really been an exhausting meeting, just listening to so many have, in the public, and also to know what this council really means to me, and the amount of time and energy that I put into it. And I know that all of us do that together, as, as a, as a group. And to be told, and to be, and to hear and read such negative comments that we're not able to express easily from this group is a little bit upsetting. But we are able to hear it from others, and I didn't get on this council to be abused and taken advantage of, and I serve at the will of the people that elected me, and do my job to the best of my ability. And I don't want to ever shun from that, but I also want you to know that I'm not going to just sit back and not let you know that sometimes not everybody is correct. And yes, I understand giving grace, and I think that we all need to, to sit back and, and start from where we are, because there's a lot that we can learn from each other, but I don't believe it's all one way, so I just want to let that...
Anybody else up here? Anybody, anybody? Department heads.
Richard DePree, Public Works Superintendent, it's been requested of me to ask this body, the Sumner County Fair Board is hosting a carnival, it's actually started today. They are requesting eight trash cans, along with service through the duration of the carnival that's going on. So, I'm here to... So, I'm here to tell this body feels.
I, I think I need to disclose that in the conversation that we had with, um, Ms. Haimekali earlier today, that there is concern because it's no longer a fair that includes, um, nonprofit fundraising and the typical master gardener's exhibit and the 4H exhibits and the, uh, contests that they used to have at the, you know, in the stands. And so it's really become a more traditional carnival like you see that they'll have at Walmart or, um, you know, other business locations throughout the city. So, um, Ms. Haimekali and Ms. Nichols both felt like that this was a conflict that we would get in trouble with, with the auditors. And so that's what I'm sharing with you all.
Yeah, and that's based on the public purpose doctrine. Um, I don't know if Ms. Nichols wants to add anymore, but we will be, uh, the auditors come and review what we do. And we are concerned about, um, doing this for a private entity. There's no longer seems to be that public purpose. And if there is some public purpose that we're not aware of, we're welcome to, anyone's welcome to tell us that. But this time, we can't recommend that.
I did speak with the representative from the Fair Board and asked him if there was any nonprofit organizations that were still involved. And he could not, he wasn't able to tell me any, just for y'all's information. But again, I was asked to bring this forward, so.
Thank you.
So it says.
Senior, we can't do it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Tuttle?
Uh, I did place an ordinance, um, on each of your desk this evening. Uh, we opened the bids and, uh, unfortunately, I would have loved for Ms. Love to be here tonight. I'm sure she would have too.
I asked, I asked Mr. Tuttle to follow up with her in the morning. So although I do think she's watching, so.
Sure. Well, I hope she is. Um, we, we opened bids for the Airport Road at Cairo, um, intersection improvements, the signalization at that intersection, uh, last Thursday. And I didn't get the bid results in time to be able to put something on the agenda. But, um, we received two bids. We had about 235,000 left in our budget for construction. Uh, the low bid, uh, was around 280,000. Uh, so it's about $45,000 more than what we had available in our budget, uh, which we had put that budget together about a year and a half ago. So as you all know, we've seen lots of things happen and change since then. And we're not getting, not getting a ton of, of interest on the electrical and signal contract side. We, we saw the, the huge increase on our, our C-Mac, um, I-T-S bid. So, um, the ordinance that you have in front of you is to appropriate $45,000 from the general fund. Um, that is my preferred option. Um, if you don't like that option, I'm sure I can come up with some ways to, to find some other funds. Um, we have a general signal budget, uh, that we could sacrifice some things there if you felt like that was necessary. But I felt like this was a better option, uh, for us if we did have the money available.
This is an important intersection. I'll make a motion.
I second it.
Councilman Overton, first. Councilman Alexander, second.
You guys want to ask one question? I know there's other red lights that we're talking about around town. Do we not order those things earlier? I mean, if we'd ordered this a year ago, we probably wouldn't be this much out of budget. I'm just asking that question.
The, the mast arms are actually fabricated specific for the intersection. Uh, there, there's probably some play that you can have with each of them, but for the most part, they are specifically designed for the intersection, including the footings.
Yeah, I thought the same thing, and I got a lesson on how non-universal they are.
So we're just now ordering it? So how long will it be before we can get it put in?
Uh, what we understand is probably five to six months lead time. Uh, so we're probably about, you know, seven, eight months away from seeing it go up. Um, now, this is a two reading ordinance. Um, at your discretion, I could try to move the, uh, award the project and go ahead and begin to get the contract.
I'd say let's do it.
Yeah.
Anybody opposed to it?
Why don't you add that to your motion?
I'll add that to my motion.
A second.
Is there a second on that one?
Second.
Second, okay.
Yes, sir.
What is it, what's taking five months?
The, the signal mast arms.
The order.
The fabrication of those. Yes, the signal poles and arms. That's the big lead time item. They're out of state. No, well, no, not in Florida. And not the one that we have normally dealt with.
Midwest, aren't they?
Midwest and, and north are the, the two that we've seen most often. Valmont is the name of one of the companies.
Valmont's who I'm talking about.
Really?
I'll get with you on that.
Okay. Great.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, I had one other thing that I wanted to give you an update on. We've got really lots of projects going on, but, um, we're moving into the right-of-way phase on, um, our Smith Street widening project, which is a, a project that, um, we've had funded now for a little while. It's, um, in coordination with, uh, the expansion for the courthouse downtown. So the block between South Water and Boyers, uh, we're widening to a three-lane section. And there's 11 properties that are affected, but only four different property owners for those 11 properties. Uh, we've already begun appraisals. Uh, we have found that, um, there are a couple of council members that own, uh, one of the properties. And I just wanted to kind of give a heads up that we won't be able to go through a regular negotiation process uh, with that situation. We have to, um, really just move straight ahead to a condemnation process, according to our legal advice, so. Uh, but if you hear anything from, from anyone else along that, that route, um, appraisers should be getting in contact with them. Our appraiser that we've hired is Robbie Kitchen. Um, and she is, um, out of Hendersonville, T-Dot Certified Appraiser. And then our negotiating group, um, would be Ralph and Deborah Raymond. So those would the people, would be the people that they would be being contacted by in case you all are hearing anything. But we've, we've touched base with, um, with First Baptist Church already because they had a unique circumstance where they own multiple pieces of property and some of them serve the others, and so it was a little bit more complicated. So, so they certainly know what's going on, but, um, some of the others may not.
Thanks, Nick.
Yep.
I have one question for Nick. Nick, did you get my message in regard to Austin Park Drive, that road?
I did. Uh, I'm looking into that. Um, I do not think that it's on our recommended list right now. Uh, but I, I need to find out what our, our number is and when I think that it might come up. And I haven't looked at the street itself, though, so I'd like to do that as well.
I can meet you out there now. But, uh, my concern is too, a lot of our streets over in the 5th district, uh, end just straight, you know, just stop.
Right, just a dead end.
Where you could turn and, and people that's been, uh, living there, have been parking there for years. All of a sudden now, it's beginning to get tickets because they're parking in front of the house.
Well, I'm not giving any tickets to anyone.
I know, but I, I just want you to look in there and see if we can get that on the pavement list or see what we can do to improve that road.
Austin Park?
Yeah.
Right.
That kind of goes back to Liberty Creek discussion a few weeks ago. Um, that means somebody's calling and complaining, calling the police on them.
I was going to say, the only way they're going to get a ticket, somebody's got to call and complain on them.
Well, what I'm concerned about, when we go in to improve these roads, uh, we need a, if, if the road is end and a dead end, we need a cul-de-sac so they can just turn around and say just a straight road is there.
Not as easy as you make it sound.
So I mean, I understand, but it's an issue and it's a problem.
Sure. And we can, we can look at, there's going to be several of those kind of situations.
Bunch of them like that.
But, uh, you know, what we would, we would need to be looking at acquiring right-of-way to make that kind of improvement, though. So it would be, we would really need to develop projects specifically for that purpose. Um, but if there are those situations, I mean, as they come up, Austin Park makes sense and we feel like we need it because the length of the road is long enough. Some of these are just, you know, very short, a few hundred feet long and.
Right.
And, and so.
It kind of goes into the park, so it's, it would be a lot of space to.
Right. We'll look at that one specifically.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, and while talking to you, and I think, uh, in, in the 5th district, we are, we are still developing that, uh, Stormwater Project from Anthony down to Center and Carson. And, uh, probably within two months, we'll be engaging an appraiser, also probably Rob, Robbie Kitchen, uh, to begin acquisition on that project. But I'll, I'll update you a little bit later on that.
Great. Thank you.
Nick, do you have anything on that Hancock?
Pardon?
Hancock and, uh, Applet Road?
For.
The, uh, right turn?
Hancock and 109.
Yeah.
Yes, I signed, uh, Chief signed off on that, uh, probably a week ago. And I just signed off on that work order, uh, at the end of last week, beginning of this week. So it should be in Public Works' mailbox.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Nick, I'm sorry. You said the guy's name was Robin Hood. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Pardon?
Robbie Kitchen.
Robbie Kitchen.
Good Kitchen, okay.
Robbie Kitchen.
Chief, you got anything?
Jeff Beaman, Fire Chief, just want to update the council about the fire truck that we ordered last November that will have a group traveling to the manufacturer the second week of July to conduct the, uh, pre-construction conference with the hopeful expected delivery in January or February with the holidays will slow things down. And we are working quickly with Pierce, the same manufacturer, about the new platform fire truck purchase and the FY23 budget, uh, to lock that price in before they raise the price outside of our budget. The drawback for that purchase is going to be the delivery will be at, at minimum two years before we see the new fire truck.
Wow.
So we've ordered it July 1st and probably, as soon as we'll see, will be July 1st of 2024.
But you locked in the price?
That's what we're doing right now. Yes, ma'am. We have the contract documents going through legal right now to lock the price in as fast as we can. Yes, ma'am.
Awesome.
Chief, are you still got the wine bar on that truck? Is it in the budget? The wine bar you're going to put on that truck?
Oh, um, I, I don't know if that's, we can really put on a fire truck. If I'm hearing you right, maybe after the meeting, we should talk about that to see.
Ian Poney.
Yes, ma'am. But I just want to update the council. I know it's been a while, and it has taken a while to get to this spot. Uh, fire truck manufacturers are honestly busier than they've ever been. So we're, we're in line. So thank y'all very much. Y'all have a good.
Any other department heads? If not, I'll entertain a motion. We got a motion, a second, second. We are adjourned.